Good evening. It is seven o'clock on October 6th, and we are in the commission chambers, still socially distanced, but this is our first regular meeting for the month of October. I hope you felt welcomed this evening by Stephen Licklider, our airport manager, and our development director, economic development director Brian Roddemaker. They served as our greeters tonight. I'd like to introduce the folks sitting up in front of you, to my right, your left, our recording secretary Cassidy Ritz. Down in front socially distanced is our city clerk Colby Solento. Again, to my right and your left, Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone One. Our deputy mayor and Zone Two Commissioner Troy Kent. To my left and your right, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone Three. Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone Four. And then down in front, city manager Joyce Shanahan. Our assistant city manager Claire Whitley. And up on the dais with us, but at the opposite end of where he usually sits, is our city attorney Randy Hayes. For those of you folks listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington, and thank you for joining us. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation given by Pastor Mike Petrick from Harbor Baptist Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we come to you very humbly tonight. We want to give you praise for just the blessings that we see and even don't see. But Father, tonight, as we begin this session, we do honor you, Father. We do recognize that you see and know all hearts. Father, you see all the minds, you see all the intentions, the motives. Everything is open and clear unto you, Father, and may we keep that in mind as well as we go about business tonight. But Father, we also just ask that you'd let your will be done, and, Lord, you'd give strength, give wisdom to everything that's needed to be said, discussed, and decided. Lord, may it truly be something that you'd be pleased with. Father, we pray for your power. We pray, God, that your presence would be amongst us. Lord, we look to the upcoming elections as well, and we're asking God for your favor, meaning we ask you to have your will. I'm not here to stump for anybody. We're just stumping for God tonight and just asking that you, Father, will do according to your good pleasure. And Father, we ask that you'd bless everything that's said and done. Lord, everyone that has something to say, may it be done with grace. Lord, I pray that everything be done also with open and understanding ears. Lord, we give you thanks again. Bless us, protect us, help us. Lord, even in this remaining pandemic that we're dealing with, oh, God, I pray that you'd eradicate it, Lord, that you would allow us to have the vaccines and everything that's necessary, Lord, just to keep us safe. We want to serve you, be good people within our community, and, Lord, be able to go back to a somewhat of a normalcy. We all understand it may be a whole new normal, but we know you'll give the grace for all of those things. May you be pleased in all things tonight again. Thank you, in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to presentations and proclamations, and I think this may be the first set of proclamations that we've given out since, certainly since the pandemic started. I don't know. Yeah, it's been quite a while, so it's nice to be getting back to some sense of normal. And if I could ask Orman Beach Police Officer Jessica Fowler, Orman Beach Police Officer Adam Griswold, and Volusia County Sheriff's Deputy Christie Bork Stirrup to come forward, please.
Amen. Remember me?
I do.
Good to see you.
You too.
A socially-distanced proclamation presentation. I'm going to read this, and then we're going to take some pictures afterwards. I'm going to ask the sheriff and our police chief to come up for that as well. Whereas the men and women who serve as sworn law enforcement officers ensure the public safety and quality of life and should be commended for their courage, while law enforcement is often turned to in moments of danger and desperation, many agencies, including Orman Beach, also participate in outreach to build and maintain relationships with their local communities. And whereas the sworn officers with the Orman Beach Police Department, Volusia County Sheriff's Office, and other agencies are called upon daily to protect and serve the residents of their communities in complex and challenging situations, the city of Orman Beach appreciates their service and selflessness. And whereas on September 21st, 2020, while on routine patrol, Orman Beach officers Jessica Fowler and Adam Griswold and Volusia County Sheriff's Deputy Christie Bork Stirrup responded to a call for assistance from the concerned family member of an individual. The officers and deputy responded to the location, assessed the situation, and took quick decisive action to rescue the individual in distress. And whereas Officer Fowler, Officer Griswold, and Deputy Bork Stirrup saved the life of a citizen in crisis, their efforts, teamwork, and valor are to be commended. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2020, as a day to recognize these sworn law enforcement officers in the city of Orman Beach and invite all citizens to join me this day in offering these heroic officers our respect and gratitude for their outstanding service. How can we choose center, like one here and then one on each side? We're going to do this as socially-distanced as we can and have the commission come in. Sheriff, thank you for being with us. Everybody, we always recognize our county officials when they join us, and the sheriff has been kind enough to join us tonight. Sheriff Mike Chippel.
Yay!
Did you want to say a few words?
Sure.
We're good.
We still have a few pictures.
Did you guys have any family you wanted to bring up for pictures? Because you're welcome to.
I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right. Audience remarks. We have two cards, and we'll start tonight with Julia Trillo. Other she is.
Good evening. I just came this evening to share something very pleasant with you. As many of you know, I had nominated the city for a Secretary of State's award at the Florida Main Street Conference, and we won, you won. So it finally arrived in the mail, so I brought it to you. This award is for public improvement, and so you were competing against cities, 42 other Main Street cities, and it's for our beautiful new floating dock. So I wanted to leave this with you and say thank you again.
Thank you, Julia. That's great.
It was on somebody's show.
Colby will find the exact right place for that. And next, we have Jim Schultz. I thought I saw Jim. There he is.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard. You know, I sort of feel like Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz. Maybe I should say, Toto, I don't think we're in Kansas anymore. But anyways, you know, the whole concept on a new normal actually could be good, and it could be terrifying, because I think a lot of the new normal really isn't to give us control over our own health, it's to give government control over our own health. I don't think that has ever been normal or healthy. Or gee, in the Nuremberg Trials, what did they execute those people for? Doing medical procedures on people that couldn't give their own consent. Sounds sort of familiar. Well, anyways, I hope we're not going down that path. I'm afraid we are. I heard the mayor, as I was driving here, actually on a broadcast, mentioned vitamin D is important. I'd like to re-stress that absolutely 100% in agreement on that. It's far more important than you could ever comprehend unless you read the data. There just was a study out of Spain that just turns everything on its ear. It was actually the first random-controlled placebo test of actual patients that had COVID in a hospital situation with completely the same standard of care except for one major deviation. A much bigger group actually got vitamin D in a very large dose, a mega-dose, because most of them were probably deficient, and they wanted their T-cells and their immune function to hyperactive be effective. Well, the difference in was a little bit startling. Half of the group that didn't get a vitamin D ended up in ICU. Three of them died. That's not so good. The group that got the mega-dose of vitamin D on an intermittent basis decreasing over time, the details aren't that important. But what happened there was, instead of half of the people, one out of the 50 actually ended up in ICU, and everybody went home healthy and with no side effects. 25 times difference? That's beyond comprehension for any vitamin. Well, it's not really a vitamin, it's a zico-hormone that your body can make if you had the ability to produce it without any sun. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. And I learned about vitamin D, obviously, from you first, but I've seen some of the studies coming out indicating how important it is, and not just the supplemental vitamin D, but the actual sunlight, you know, getting 20 or 30 minutes of good sunlight each day is a big deal, apparently, so thank you for that. Approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from the city commission meeting of September 23rd. They've been sent to the commission for review, posted on the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Just need a motion to approve.
I move approval of the minutes from September 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. This next item on our agenda is a community redevelopment agency item. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Orman Beach and must review this item and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. And I will, as chairman of the CRA, at this time, open the public hearings and ask our secretary to read 7A by title.
Resolution number 2020-139, a resolution of the city commission, also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Orman Beach, Florida, accepting a proposal from Hall &amp; Ogle Architects, Inc., to provide design services for the Casson Park Improvements Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-139, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I do not have any cards, any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Commissioner Selby.
The Hall &amp; Ogle is a really good firm. I've known some of the principals in that firm for years. I just have a question. I know they're busy. There's a lot of government projects going on right now. Does the contract provide for a, you know, like a start date and progress work and that this, that we're, we can be assured that the work will be done expeditiously?
We do, Commissioner. We put in all of our contracts, we put a time limit on those contracts for them to make sure that they get it done in a timely manner and keep our projects moving.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? The only item I had, and I appreciate that staff is going to be getting input from Ike Leary, I think that's very important, but also I'd like the Orman Main Street Organization, the design committee, to provide whatever input they have, and then the general public as well, should anybody want to provide any information or input. I worry that this is something that's happening that happens once every 20 or 30 years, if we're lucky, so I want to make sure we get it right. I don't like the fact that there's already a proposed drawing in there. I don't know necessarily that that's the agreed-upon best plan, and so I'd like to move forward as a community with the best plan in place, and making sure we get that input is critical. And also take the comments from the downtown advisory board that met regarding the four corners and what an important role it plays, our waterfront in those four corners, and just to make sure that whatever we do over here at Casson Park across the street fits into a potential bigger plan if we ever do anything else along the river in the next 10 or 15 years, that it can plug into that and be a successful improvement. So I'm excited about it. It's time for it, and just want to make sure we get it right. So those are my only comments. Anybody else? Deputy Mayor Kent.
Yes, thank you. I would just add that, you know, 20 to 30 years, I disagree. I think it's more of a once-in-a-generation opportunity. You know, I think it's, you get one shot at this for the next 50-plus years, and we, I like the idea of having so many different ideas and viewpoints from different stakeholders. I love that, of course, Ike is going to be involved. I love that we can get Orman Main Street involved and our citizenry as well. You know, I had a conversation with someone earlier today, and they said they were concerned also, Mr. Mayor, that there was a rendering in our packet and that they weren't, they didn't have any input in this. And, you know, something they said, I mean, I didn't think about this, maybe you all did, maybe you didn't, but the person said, "You can't put the walls up on a place like this if you don't have the bait wells in, because you can't fit them through the door." And that's something we need to talk about, and if you don't know that, if you're not in the business, then you just don't know. I'm going to tell you how confident I am in Joyce Shanahan in making sure that all stakeholders have a seat at the table and that we collectively as a group come up with the absolute best plan. And I'm going to reference something else. Mr. Mayor, members of this commission, you know, we talked, how many years was it, Mr. Mayor, about welcome signs in the city of Orman Beach? Was it, would you say over seven years? Five to seven years?
Right around in there, yes.
But I will say this, no, I'm going to, I'll state it. Mayor, then Commissioner Partington, you put your foot down about not rushing through that process, getting it right, so that we don't have another monopoly piece like we have on US-1 that wasn't thought through and the scope and scale wasn't looked at. So I think, you know, getting different people together and getting their ideas is going to be a huge win for our community, and I like the idea and the thought of making sure that we are planning for the future. You know, we're limited with space in that corner, but using it smartly and as wise as we can so that we can plug in in the future. So I think we're on the right track.
Good deal. Anyone else? If not, we'll have a voice vote on this, and just need a motion and a second. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, and we'll show that. Recommendation for approval, passing unanimously. I will close the public hearings, abandon my role as chairman of the CRA, and now reconvene the city commission meeting and bring us back to our consent agenda, which is eight, item eight. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve our consent agenda this evening?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and now would be the appropriate time if anyone wanted to comment on any of the, Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I just wanted to just point out that we just approved a little over $960,000 worth of capital investments in the city, of which over $800,000 is from the water and wastewater fund. We are, and this is just one meeting, you know, this month, we spend millions of dollars maintaining, improving, expanding the water and wastewater systems. We also approved a million and a half of future projects, one of which is 75% paid by FEMA, by the federal government. That's a $225,000 grant, and I just, I just think that's credit to the staff to make sure that we're in line, to avail ourselves of programs like that that are available to solve our problems, so with that.
Amen. Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move to nine, which are public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the city clerk to read 9A.
Ordinance number 2020-47, an ordinance amending paragraph C official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone certain real property totaling 3.42 plus or minus acres located at 40 Timber Creek Road from Volusia County RC Resource Corridor and A2 Agriculture to Orman Beach SE Special Environmental, authorizing revision of official zoning map repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-47, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards. We'll move to nine, which are public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the city clerk to read 9A.
Ordinance number 2020-47, an ordinance amending paragraph C official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone certain real property totaling 3.42 plus or minus acres located at 40 Timber Creek Road from Volusia County RC Resource Corridor and A2 Agriculture to Orman Beach SE Special Environmental, authorizing revision of official zoning map repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-47, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2020-47.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9B.
Ordinance number 2020-48, an ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Orman Beach. Said property being generally located at 1644 North US Highway 1, along the west side of said highway, and being northwest of the Interstate 95 North US-1 interchange, and being commonly known as the AA Accurate Truck and Tire Repair Property. Parcel ID number 3136-01-64-0010, including that portion of Oak Street right-of-way abutting the property to the south. Setting forth privileges and obligations regarding the properties, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city to include the properties, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Orman Beach to include the properties, and providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-48, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask Planning Director Stevens-Brecker to give us some background on this item.
Good evening, Stevens-Brecker, Plan Director. So this is a request for annexation for 1644 North US-1. Is it in existing use? They are seeking a future addition, which will require the connection of utilities, which generates the need for annexation. It's a total of 4.75 acres. As part of it, we are also seeking to annex a portion of Oak Street right-of-way, which has not been vacated yet, so we could see eventually vacating that right-of-way. So that's being annexed as part of this project. Staff is recommending approval. We find it consistent with the annexation statutes. This is in the interlocal service boundary agreement, so this, again, is investing into the North US-1 corridor.
Good deal. Any questions for Stevens? Commissioner Selby.
Steven, there was some discussion in the write-up about creating, oh, shoot, I just blanked on the term, where we create an island or an exation, is that?
Enclave.
Enclave, yeah, enclave, thank you. Enclave. Is it, can you address that at all? Is an enclave created by this or not created by this?
No, if you look at the map, so the gray is the city of Orman Beach, so it would not create an enclave. And the power, one power of the interlocal service boundary agreement is basically we're able to take in properties, whether they create enclaves or not. So we have an agreement with Volusia County that if it's within that district, we can annex it when they connect to utilities.
And so that may be, so, and that's permitted because of the, by state law? That's one of the exceptions, and you can create an enclave when there is a?
Interlocal service boundary.
Interlocal service boundary.
That's part of the power of that agreement.
And I noticed that US-1, that section of US-1, the gray is city of Orman, right?
Correct.
So the white is county, right? So that slash of US-1 connects to those other parcels out west, obviously, west of Destination Daytona, or north?
Correct, and many of those parcels have not connected to utilities. As they connect, they will be annexed. They are still bound by the interlocal service boundary agreement, and they have city land use and zoning.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Steven. Again, I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Go ahead.
Move for approval, ordinance number 2020-48.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings. That brings us to reports, suggestions, and requests, and tonight we start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay? Rest assured, we will ensure that we cast a wide net when we are looking for public input on the Casson Park, pun intended, so we will make sure we get all those interested stakeholders involved. Just want to give you, I know it's kind of crazy, but we're still in hurricane season, but I wanted to give you an update regarding Hurricane Matthew and where we are in the reimbursement process. In the beginning of October 2017, staff submitted expenditure reimbursement requests in the amount of $7.9 million for seven projects. These expenditures consisted primarily of debris removal, 6.2 million, and the ball field and downtown lighting, 1.3 million. On September 11th, 2020, three years later, four years after the storm, we have received $7.41 million. We received our last reimbursement on September 11th. We also have about $400,000 outstanding for the debris-related expenses, and we're resolving that issue, so we still have a little bit outstanding there. Hurricane Irma, beginning in July 2018, staff submitted almost $3.7 million for 24 projects, and in July 2020, the city has received $3 million in storm-related cost reimbursement, and we anticipate an additional $200,000 for the Casson Park storm, I mean Casson Park Pier. So we expended $11.6 million and received $10.4 to date, and we expect to receive about $600,000. This represents 95% reimbursement rate, so that's pretty good, and finance staff did a great job on that, so kudos go to them. Leisure Services is having a trunk-or-treat out of the sports complex. It's a family-friendly event. It's a drive-through event, beginning on Saturday, October 24th, at 5:30 and lasting until 8:30. It's going to be highly decorated. We have lots of business and community groups sponsoring candy and whatnot, so we encourage you to all come out. Our sports programs are in great stead right now. We have currently about 127 participants in Pop Warner, 114 in Pride, so we're glad to see that well going on. For recreational soccer, we have 406 registered. Last year, there was 548, so just a little bit below where we expected to be. OBYBSA, which is baseball, has 15 registers so far, and they're anticipating more, but that's a spring event. Some project updates. Water Treatment Sledge Residual Facilities Improvement is underway, just again, as you said before, Commissioner Selby. We're constantly making routine maintenance improvements in our water and wastewater facilities. As you have done, you've routinely invested in capital projects for water and wastewater treatment. Right before I got here, you spent about $20 million on a water treatment plant, and shortly after I got here, you finished $20 million in a rehab of the wastewater treatment facility, so about $40 million in just over 12 years. The Nova Community Park Underground Electric Utility, that was one of the capital projects we had, that's well underway. If you've been down Caseman's Drive, you can see the, I can't think of what they call that building. that building, the new garage or whatever, the shed or whatever, so that's well underway. So, we're thankful that the commission approved tonight an expansion of the fiber-optic connectivity, which allows us to connect two lift stations and the Standish water tank to our telemetry or our digital readouts, so we can keep track of those a little bit more easily. So, that's all I have tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions for Joyce?
So Joyce, you're fishing for ideas on the Casson Park project?
Couldn't resist.
Our Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley.
I cannot talk about.
All right, thank you. City Attorney, Randy Hayes.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and we will start tonight with Commissioner Persis.
Oh, great. I wasn't expecting that, but I have some really great news. I really want to, first of all, I want to thank Steve Spraker, last night joined me at a homeowners' meeting at Moss Point, and he just did a stellar job explaining to those residents a little bit about a potential apartment that could be coming near their area, and he was just great, and I was just so impressed, and we actually really had a good time with the people, so I just want everyone to know, you're really wonderful, and that's all I have tonight.
Awesome. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to speak to the public in the commission about the fact that Regal Cinemas is going to be closing all of their UK and US movie theaters. Of course, we have one here in Ormond Beach, One Williamson, and there's a fear specifically from what's called the National Association of Theater Owners, that 70% of movie theaters will not make it past the pandemic, and that could leave a little hole in the heart of this community. You know, a lot of people's first job is a movie theater, they have family fun nights, and so I just want us as a commission and a government to sort of have ideas and think about what can happen with that piece of property, and any development or whatever other, you know, stuff could go in there. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, we lost Ty Wilson recently, and many of you know him. I've known Ty for, well, almost 40 years, really since I first moved to the area. A developer, a builder, a community servant, past president of the Daytona Beach Area Chamber of Commerce, and active in Rotary and other organizations throughout the community, and, but I think maybe his most notable characteristic is his four-decade battle with multiple sclerosis, MS. You know, you, it was hard to imagine, I mean, it is hard to imagine how long he struggled with that, but he always had a smile on his face, always had a cheery attitude, in spite of his ever-increasing diminishment of his ability to move and just operate independently. And so, just thinking about Linda and his, and his family, his daughters, and his grandkids, and so forth. And then just a point of personal privilege, yesterday was sort of a strange day. I had another, I had an elected official on the county council, on the radio, called me a liar, and say that I lied four times on the radio, and I didn't hear it live. I had to listen to it later. So a friend called me at about 8 o'clock last night and said, "Hey, I assume I'm the 10th or 20th person to call you," and actually, he was the first. So I quickly listened to it and was shocked. Shocked that an elected official would do that without even consulting with me, without even calling me to say, "Hey, is this true?" You know, somebody told me this, and without even checking with me, calling me a liar. That's the bad news. The good news is that several people have reached out to me and have said, "Dwight, we stand by you, we know this is BS," and that's very, very encouraging. And I told the sheriff earlier, when he was here, I said, you know, and even in discussing it with my wife, she said, "I don't know how you, I don't know how you can stand this, you know, it's driving me crazy." And I said, "Sheryl, it's real easy. I'm not a politician, I'm a public servant. I speak the truth. I speak what's on my heart, and the public, the voters, get to decide who sits in this chair. So, I don't care." I mean, she's the one not telling the truth, not me. I have always spoken the truth. And so with that, I'll say goodnight, and I'll say thank you for the support that I've received. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, and Deputy Mayor Kent.
Thank you, Mayor. To kind of tag on what Commissioner Selby, you know, just said, I recently, actually today, was listening to the radio and heard a little discussion about this. And, you know, I don't know why, but I had an urge to call the radio and defend Commissioner Selby, and I said to myself, "Don't do that. He can handle himself." And if I did, I was just going to call and say, "From a man who disagrees with another man about what we should be doing in other jurisdictions, his heart is no doubt in the right place." So I wanted to share that publicly, because that's truly how I felt, and it's truly how I feel. I know, by working with you and knowing you for 17 years, the type of man you are, and the integrity that is instilled in you. And with that, I'll just say, hey, we're at the last corner of election season, and I love this stuff. I always have, and, I mean, I am, I am pumped up for election night, and I'm excited about it, and, you know, Ormond Beach voters are the smartest voters in the world. They always get it right, you know, and with me, win, lose, or draw, they always get, they always get it right. So with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about our first responders, police and fire. I didn't recognize our chiefs, as I like to do when we opened up this evening, but our first responders have been dealing with the pandemic issues for months now on the front lines, and they've done an exceptional job of that. The fire department, I went to deliver a proclamation last week to a very sweet 100-year-old lady who had been an educator her entire life, and really had a fantastic outlook. So staff contacts them, it was a little bit of short notice to put it all together, but staff contacts them, and so from the administration perspective, they find out every detail about her life and put together this beautifully worded proclamation, and then to make sure I'm safe when I'm delivering it to her, fire had delivered an N95 mask that I could wear. I've got the regular cloth mask, but I'd feel terrible if, you know, something I did made somebody else sick, so just to be extra careful, fire made sure that I had those. And then, tonight, recognizing the police officers, and in that proclamation, our staff made sure to mention the fact that these are sworn officers, and there's something special about being a sworn law enforcement. They're held to a higher standard, they take their obligations seriously, and so a sworn law enforcement officer is a special thing, and I'm glad that staff specifically recognized that in the proclamation, I just wanted to highlight that tonight. And then our Public Works folks, who have continuously worked, sometimes shorthanded throughout these last few months, always do a great job for our city. Their heart is in the right place, wanting to be customer-service friendly and get the job done in the correct way, and I'm always appreciative of that, so just wanted to point that out. One other example, our city manager talked about the FEMA reimbursements and how hard finance has worked. That's a very difficult thing, to get that money back out of FEMA, and I don't think any city does it better than us. There may be a couple in the state that are close to as good, but they're in touch with FEMA officials in a changing state and federal landscape every day. They stay on top of it and get those dollars back for our residents, which is really incredible, so I'm proud of the hard work that they do. I wanted to point out that the school system has been doing a fantastic job reopening our schools. That is a very critical component of getting back to normal, whatever the new normal or sense of normalcy is, and they're doing it safely, and they're doing just a wonderful job at it. I've been to, this week will be my third Seabreeze football game, the kids are wearing masks, the adults are wearing masks, everybody's trying to stay as socially distanced as possible, and from what I hear in the classrooms, they're staying socially distanced, they're using all the safety items that they need to, and so I just wanted to give a shout-out to the school system for that. I was at a cross-country meet on the beach today for Seabreeze, and what a, I didn't go to Seabreeze, but what an awesome place to have a cross-country meet on our beautiful beach, and those kids were having a great time. The kids from mainland, my school and originally, and then Deltona, just were, seemed like they were blown away to be running on this beautiful beach. Deputy Mayor Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, you think that's incredible. You should ask Commissioner Persis and myself, when we went there for lunchtime, going across the street and catching some waves, surfing, and changing back into your clothes, and finishing up your last sixth and seventh period. I mean, it's one of those things that, you know, I don't know of many other locations where you can do something like that. The only thing I've seen that rival it is on the island of Maui, King Kamehameha Elementary School, is literally across the street from the ocean, and there, you know, shoes are optional for students, so you see 90% of the class walk by without any shoes on. You said perfect, yeah, it's perfect, so thanks for letting me jump in on that.
And Commissioner Persis, yep.
I even had it better, Deputy Mayor Kent, because when I went to school at Seabreeze, we were on double sessions, so I didn't go to school until 12 o'clock, and we stayed from 12 to 5, so I could go to the beach every day and go surfing before school.
You've got me beat. Yep, you've got me beat.
Okay, so, I grew up in the Chicago area.
He's like, "What's a wave?"
Near Lake Michigan, but surfing wasn't all that great on Lake Michigan, and in the winter, that was really tough, but, but, we used to get up about 4:30, walk, it had to be at least three miles, with our hockey equipment, and play on an outdoor rink, an artificial rink, but nonetheless outdoors, until the police would come over and very kindly say, "Could you guys like not hit so many slap shots against the boards? You know, we got people in the neighborhood here trying to sleep," and then we'd have to find a place to stick our hockey sticks at the school, and fortunately, we had a couple of teachers that were sympathetic, but anyway. Are you Rob?
Baltimore? Baltimore in the house?
I used to skip school and go to a pool hall. That's what I would do.
Good deal. Well, and I'm, that's right, I'm saving the best for last tonight, and this is Art House, a local art community honored Carl and Susan Persis in an annual fun and funky fundraiser, and our own Ormond observers, Jarlene Almenes, did a very nice article on this, in recognition of their local efforts, a beautiful picture of Susan and Carl Persis, their local efforts in education for almost four decades. They were honored at the Art House Foundation's 22nd Annual Fun and Funky Event, which was virtual this year, I think it's the first time they've done that. So some of the past honorees have been former sheriff and county councilman Ben Johnson, former county chair Frank Bruno, Port Orange City Manager Ken Parker, now retired, but both Carl and Susan championed the arts in our school, this is a quote from the executive director of Art House, "Both Carl and Susan championed the arts in our school system, and we just wanted to recognize them for that and for their endless service, both as Volusia County educators, as well as in their elected positions now." So, congratulations to you, wonderful honor, and for those that are interested, the virtual auction continues through October 9th, and so that's something that you can do online. They've already raised thousands of dollars, but that sounds like something fun, fun to look at, and I just wanted to recognize you both for that, so thank you for all you do for our community, and with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you all.